Ready? Okay, I'll call us back to order. We will now go to committee whole. We have four items. The first item is an ordinance of the city of Bellaham, Washington, amending chapter 4.76.040 of Bellaham Municipal Code regarding the solid waste fund to include nuisance abatement as an intended use of the fund. Mr. Raffato.
Yeah, Peter Raffato, legal department. The background on this, this really stems out of budget discussions in the fall, and there was some discussion about setting aside some money for the purpose of nuisance abatement. And the direction at that point was really to just recognize in an ordinance that that is an appropriate use for the solid waste fund. So the proposal is to make it clear in the code that that is the case. This ordinance acknowledges that in certain circumstances, our code enforcement can only take us so far in getting compliance with the code, and that use of city funds for nuisance abatement can be appropriate when you've exhausted some of the other code enforcement resources. This also acknowledges, just in a policy, in the form of policy, in a whereas clause, that it's the policy of the city to keep sufficient funds available in the fund for the purpose of funding nuisance abatement, as is needed throughout the city from time to time. It's not something that we see on a regular basis, but, for example, we, the city just recently completed a nuisance abatement on Lynn Street, and that's a case where the normal code enforcement was not sufficient. We had the legal department received a court order. That was back on Friday, February 6th, and within a week, that abatement was completed. We don't know what the total cost for that will be, but there are some estimates that it might be $20,000 per, there's actually two separate properties where the nuisance was abated. And mainly, it was a lot, junk vehicles, tremendous amount of junk that was around the properties. In fact, the, one of the homes required 18 and a half dump truck loads to be taken away, and this was just outside of the residence. So that's just an example of what this will be used for, and I can answer any questions beyond that.
Peter, in these cases of abatement, is there sometimes a possibility that we can be reimbursed for this, so in some cases, when we go in and abate some, you know, blighted property? Is there sometimes or always an opportunity to recoup some of that cost, or usually these people are kind of bankrupt anyway or something?
I would say that that's something where we are focused on trying to get each time. It's not necessarily always available. There's different levels of sort of lien status. There was actually a bill in the legislature, state legislature, last year, I don't think, I don't think it's in there this year, that would put city abatement on par with county abatements. And in county abatements, there's sort of a recognized property lien that you can file after you complete an abatement action. But we do have some tools that we resort to, and we will be, for example, in this case, we're able to, we got it, since we were in the court process already, we can get, as part of the court order, really a judgment against the property, and then that gets filed as a lien. That may not be as powerful a tool as some of the other tools out there. We're also looking at, specific to derelict buildings, there is something that we have yet to adopt, where, for a derelict building specifically, that isn't what this was, you can, it's a very lengthy process if you build it into your code, but state law recognizes that you can actually get assessments on the property through the tax process after having completed an abatement. But there's lots of due process protections for the property owner, and that's appropriate in that circumstance. But that's something we're going to take a look at in terms of getting it into our code as well.
Jack.
So a couple of weeks ago, I had a chance, I was walking in the Columbia neighborhood and went by the, one of the Lynn Street places, and I tell you, it was, it was right up there with, you know, many, many years ago over on G Street, there was a pretty bad one there, too. This rated right up there. So it's great that that part of it had been dealt with. And I guess I want to compliment you, Peter, in getting this together as quickly as you did, based on the council's decision to go that route just, just a few months ago with our budget process. And I think it's really fast to get this, to this position. So I would move approval of the ordinance.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion, Roxanne.
I'm just really excited about this, too, because in my previous background, I've seen what happens when homes of this nature get cleaned up. It just brings hope back to a street. It shows the neighbors that actually, that they matter in this just as much as the property that was the problem. And I just think this creates better community revitalization in streets and neighborhoods that really need it, so I just thank you for doing this.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries seven zero. I'll report that tonight. Our next item is rental registration and inspection program update.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm Rick Seppler, the planning and community development director. We come before you today to give you an update on progress to implement the rental registration and inspection program. It is the results you'll see today are the work of an interdepartmental team that includes IT, finance, policy avalists for council, and legal, as well as planning and community development. We're making steady, measured progress towards implementation. We did feel it was appropriate to touch base with you on a number of issues that are pending, and be able to share with you some of the insights we've learned, and also provide some background on some of the choices that we made as we move forward, so that when you take final action, you'll have seen the steps that get into it. That being said, today, we're going to talk about four key component parts of the program. The first is, we're going to discuss fee approaches for registration, and that's registration only. For reasons I'll describe a little later today, it is likely, when you take action on the ordinance, we'll be acting only on a registration fee pending the full resolution of some pending issues with permitting software for the inspection. But that should follow in short order, and we do have a fairly good confidence interval on the general price range. It's more the details. Secondly, we'll go over the checklist that would be used in inspection, and Jim Tinner is here to specifically address that. I know that in our correspondence with council, a number of issues have been raised, notably with methamphetamine testing, asbestos, as well as mold. And I've asked Jim to address those on point, on how they would be accommodated by a program or not addressed specifically, and why, the background for that. I know that city attorney will present an overview of some of the minor changes that will be in the final reading of the ordinance you'll see. As he will explain later, those are largely functional issues, minor clarifications, so it tracks internally, but we didn't want you to be surprised when you saw the draft at a future date on those clarifications. And finally, I will conclude by giving you an update on the inspection side, since we've really got our arms around and feel very confident on registration. We need to sort of bring you up to speed where we are in inspection, what's pending, and what are the decision path to move forward. So we'll begin with Mark's presentation on fee approaches.
Mark Gardner, legislative analyst for the council. Rick is kind enough to allow me to join in the fun on rental registration. I've been working on it for quite a number of years in the background, and so I didn't want to miss out on all the limelight, so I have a suitably, a suitably lime-colored presentation for your viewing pleasure. It's going to be pretty short. As you see from the packet, we have some pretty straightforward options for you. These options build off of the detailed budget numbers that Rick has put together in conjunction with other departments on the registration side. Just a little bit of background, the goal here is to bring in enough total revenues to recover the costs of the program. That's the general broad goal. We also want to calibrate the fee schedule to reflect estimates of actual program costs. We want to minimize affordability impacts on renters, since fees will likely get passed on to the renter in most instances. And that's a point that's been made repeatedly, so we've been pretty aware of that all along. We want to be very fair with any fee structure we come up with. Lastly, the fees cover registration and general program costs, and a separate fee will be put together to cover the cost of inspections. So that's general background. And we've got some pretty distinct options for you to consider today. I'd like to get direction on your, your opinion regarding which of these you might like to see, or some version, some slightly changed version thereof, but what we've got is two flat fees, and all of these raise about the same amount of revenues. They all cover the costs, so they meet that general principle. The first flat fee is option number one, which is to look at the properties in the city, multiply by a particular fee per property of $23, and that returns the amount to cover the registration. The other is to multiply by the rental units, $9 per rental unit. And then the third is essentially a blend or a halfway point of the first two options, and I'll explain some of the reasons for this third option as I get a little bit farther along here. So that would be a sliding scale with per-unit fees dropping as property size and units increases. It would go from $12 for a single detached unit down to $6 for, per unit for larger So just a quick overview of pros and cons. Option one, which is the flat fee per property, is very simple to communicate, administer. That's on the pro side. On the con side, as you can see from the distribution of units and properties, if you're calculating on the number of properties, what you see is to the right side of this chart, there are very few properties represented that are, the larger ones, but those larger ones account for quite a substantial number of units. So, for example, the largest properties of 20 or more are about 2% of all properties, but they encompass about 40% of all units. So a per-property-only fee would shift some of the, the cost of the program towards the smaller units. Pros and cons of option two, which are the per-unit fee, again, it's pretty simple to administer and communicate, but the downside is that it could have the, essentially the opposite effect of the first one, in which would be to overcharge properties with the largest numbers of units. And just looking at the, the cost drivers within the more detailed budget numbers, some of them have economies of scale, so those, those costs do not go up as the property size goes up. For example, some of the activities around just the registration and getting people into the registration system, there's some economies of scale there. However, there are a whole set of other budget drivers that are part of a general program, such as mailings to tenants, responses to tenant queries about the program, and printing and distributing tenant educational materials, all the activities around educating and responding to the broader need for this program, those will be affected by numbers of units, numbers of people in units. So, so that's the downside of this, is that it doesn't reflect the left side of this, which is that some costs do have economies of scale on a per-property basis. And lastly, the pros and cons of options, option three are that it represents a blended program, recognizing that some program costs are tied to properties, while others scale up according to numbers of units. And the downside is marginally more complicated to communicate and administer. It's not something you can always remember quite as easily, but it's nevertheless pretty straightforward. So we've got those three options. As I mentioned, you might want to recommend one of them as is, or provide some additional direction as to other alternatives, and we're here to take any feedback you have on these fee options.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yes, if I might add, it's council's purview to determine what is in the best interest when setting this fee and balancing the policy intent and cost. I should note that the interdisciplinary team, the administrative team, would recommend the per parcel basis, we've talked about that before, for economy in terms of operations, the easiest to program and work with. However, it's council's pleasure on what the best approach might be to balance that technical need along with policy intent.
Jack.
Thank you, Gene. As I look at through the, the three different options, I actually think there's the fourth option that we could consider, too, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a second. But speaking to option one, you know, when I look, when I look nationally at the 1% representing, 1% of our, of our nation.
Mark, can you put option one back on the screen?
You know, of our, of our income, the income inequality issue that we have in the nation, and seeing that option one has 2% of the, of the properties representing 40% of the units, well, it's also 40% of the rents, too. And, you know, a lot of money is being transacted with that, and I, to me, it just seems like it's not fair to the mom-and-pops that own ones and twos and three units to, to go that route. I think a per-unit, if it was, I mean, what I would support would be just a simple per-unit charge. I appreciate what Mark has, has put together for the option three, the blended approach, but I feel that, that the, the fee structure between one unit and 50 and up, being double, is pretty, you know, that, that seems to be kind of excessive as far as a marginal difference. The option that I would, I would like to throw out would be, to have, kind of to split what's going on with, with option three, and to say one through 19 units would be $10, and anything above 20 units would be $8. It would still generate the same number of dollars for making the program work, but it would be, it would compress that differential to a point where it really would reflect on the points that Mark was talking about, what, you know, what are the cost advantages and, and price differences between having a per-property versus a per-unit, and what, what the real nexus was in the actual workload. So I throw that out there. I mean, I really don't think that the per-property is, is an effective way for us to go and deal with this. I would, again, I would think that per-unit, or having an option four, which would be this $10 and $8, and to really look at the fact that if you're going to give a discount, it should be a minimal discount. The other part that I think that is, is appropriate to understand is that with the way that the state law has been set up, and the way that the state law was, you know, for the, for rentals, the landlord-tenant act was, was, was renegotiated a couple, a few years ago, and the rental industry went and lobbied hard to get the large units to have a discount, in essence, on the inspection component. That if a municipality went and had an inspection program that, say, with a 100-unit building, that only 20% would be inspected, and the other 80% would not have to be inspected. That's a tremendous, you know, cost savings, that people that own a duplex or a fourplex or something, they're not going to be able to go and realize any sort of discount like that. And for a 100-unit building, represents around $7,000 in inspection cycle of a discount, pretty, pretty substantial. And, you know, I, I just think that that would not, not be the best way to go about it. They're already getting a discount. We shouldn't have a discount on the registration side as well. So.
Michael.
I guess, first of all, I agree. I think a per-property would be unfair, you know, the small, you know, the people who had 40% of the units would pay you in just a couple hundred dollars for the entire program. So I reject option one. I'm in favor of the blended approach, either option three or, you know, maybe your simplified version, Jack. I do think that that blended version recognizes the reality most fairly, that, that many costs scale with unit, but not all costs do. You know, whether it's eight, 10, or $12, we're talking less than a dollar per unit per month, as we saw on the paper today. Because of the tight rental market, you know, average rents for a unit, I think, was, was going up around $22 per year on average. That's twice this amount. I think a couple of years ago, average rents went up around $40, $50, again, just due to the, you know, tight rental market. So whether we choose option, blended option three or four, I'm, I'm very pleased to see that these are small numbers and should have minimal impacts on affordability.
Actually, Michael, clarification, what you said, these are annual costs, and what you were talking about, the $22 on the paper?
Right.
That was per month.
Yes, yes.
So it's $22 versus less than $1.
Roxanne.
Jack, I really want to thank you for your approach to this, because I really believe that the blended option is the best, but for total clarity's sake, because we're going to have to evangelize this information and make it really, really clear, and I appreciate the simplicity of the 10 and the 8, and that's what I really value.
Any other comments? Dan.
I would favor option three with Jack's amendments as the least regressive and most progressive approach.
Thank you.
I agree. I think option three was a little too complicated as it stood, so, but revised, I, I think I could support that.
So you want to make a motion, then, Jack?
So I'll make the motion to have an option four, which would, which would read that property size uni, in units would be one through 19 units, would be $10, and 20 and above units per parcel would be $8.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion on the motion? Michael.
Does the staff believe that those numbers really will pencil out and bring in just the same, more or less the same amount of revenue?
I'm glad you asked.
Thank you.
I would say that would be contingent. What we'd ask is, if you make your motion, you pass it, we will look and confirm that we capture the revenue necessary to sustain the program. If there's a shortfall, we'll come back to council.
I did that work, and it does, but confirm it.
Hey, there you go. Got your new assistant over there. Go ahead, Roxanne.
I was just going to ask, would we want to put any stipulations in about regular reviews of the fees?
I think it's a general assumption. We've made it clear in all aspects of preparing this, that we will look at an annual basis on fees, largely because we have some uncertainty. We're estimating some of the costs. We want to adjust it either up or down to cover it, and we also know that after three years, there might be some slight decrease, because we've done, the upfront costs have been recovered.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor will say aye. Aye, all who oppose, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, sir.
Okay. The next component part that comes before council for consideration and discussion is the checklist. Although we are not proposing to initiate the inspections till after January of '16, it's appropriate, since many questions have been raised regarding the scope and extent of the inspection, that it be provided, that questions that are, have been raised by this body, as well as by the public, be addressed. I've asked our certified building official, Jim Tinner, to prepare some materials for you, and he would also be able to answer any questions you might have on the balance of the checklist as, as proposed.
Come on up, Jim.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. I've been asked to look at testing for methamphetamines, lead paint, asbestos, and mold, and I brought some materials, and I'll leave for anybody that's interested, I'll leave them here on the table, several copies, that explains each one, but I'll go over it briefly. Testing for methamphetamines, we do have a threshold established by the state health department for when it's deemed unhealthy, and currently, it's 1.5 micrograms per 100 square centimeters. So there is a threshold we could take action on if it was exceeded. The laboratory costs for the tests are usually somewhere between $40 and $80. The people taking the swabs for the meth testing would have to have specific training to do so. I think we have some of our police department going through that now for other purposes. We'd need the occupant's legal approval to take the samples. We couldn't do it unless the tenant agreed. And lastly, on meth, the Waukesha County Health Department will test if the tenant asks them to. They do provide that service. Any questions on meth testing?
Yes.
Jack.
Is it only the tenant that has to agree? I mean...
It's the person that has legal control of the dwelling unit, which would be the tenant.
So the property owner has no say in, in whether or not it gets tested or not, if they suspect?
They probably could under the landlord-tenant act, yeah, if they gave enough notice, yeah. But if we did it on a, you know, the city did it, we would need the occupant's permission.
And what we should say is, we did investigate whether we could incorporate that testing. It's expensive. It would add significant cost and time to the process itself. Although there are onsite tests, they're not as conclusive as sending it to the lab. It's a whole nother layer. It appeared to us that since we had the ability to use the health department on request, it seemed a better approach.
Michael.
With regard to, you said that the county's health department does offer this testing if a tenant requests it. Is that at a cost to the tenant?
I believe they will charge the tenant for the laboratory test, yes.
And that's the 40, $80?
Forty to $80, somewhere in that range.
Okay. Because, I mean, there are some nightmare stories out there, and if you have a young child, and you move into an apartment, and for some reason you suspect, it would be nice if that could be tested at no cost to the tenant, but at least there is an option available through the health department.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
The next item is lead paint testing. That one's a little more difficult to get something definitive out of. According to the federal government, there is no threshold that we can test for that is unhealthy, unless we take blood samples of the people involved. So there, there is no amount of lead in the paint or the finishes that can be determined as definitively unhealthy, and I have documentation from the Center of Disease Control on that It's also very expensive. Certified lead test kits run anything from about $12 to $25 per test. They're usually good for 90 seconds, so whatever I can wipe within 90 seconds, and I break another ampule and do another 90 seconds. The typical cost to do a lead survey on a house is $247 for the materials. That doesn't include labor. It's also destructive. To take lead samples, you have to scrape down, for instance, on wood, down to the wood, to get all the layers of the paint. It could be three layers, four layers in. The same thing with walls, you actually cut a chunk of the surface off of the wall, make a flap, fold it down, swab the back of that, look for a color change, and then wait for that to dry and glue it back up. So it's also time-consuming. Any questions on the lead?
Keep going.
Asbestos. According to the federal government, the best thing you can do with asbestos is leave it alone. If we were to test for asbestos, we would have to send our personnel through that training. They would have to wear hazardous material suits. Anyone in the dwelling would have to be evacuated until all cleanup measures could, could be The costs for those are typically $50 per layer for sampling. Linoleum, as an example, has three layers, so it would be $150 if you were to cut a piece of linoleum out and test it. Popcorn ceilings, two layers, paint, and then the, the foam underneath. And again, that's destructive testing. So the federal government recommends we just leave it alone, don't, don't mess with the asbestos. Last item is mold. Mold is typically caused by excess moisture from plumbing leaks, weather intrusion, inadequate ventilation, or inadequate heat. It can be behavioral, or it can be a symptom of something wrong with the building. When it's observed, the cause may be behavioral, as I said. So our inspectors would try to determine what was the cause of the mold. If it's lack of ventilation, that could be a corrective item noted. If it's the tenant not wanting to open windows, that probably would not be. If it's weather intrusion, we would use that as a symptom to go after wherever the leak came from, or a plumbing leak. So we can take action on mold if it's a sign of a problem, but oftentimes, I've found over the years that it's caused by behavioral issues of, of the tenant. So it could go either way. Mold generally is not a symptom of a health issue. Asthmatics, it can trigger asthma, or if you're allergic to mold, it can trigger a reaction. It's a very small percentage of the population that have any physical issues with mold. It can cause a little tightness of the throat. But again, there is no limit that we can say this amount of mold is unhealthy, or this amount. or this amount is harmless.
If I, just to add to that, you know, all of the issues we just outlined are important to us, and it's one of those things where we intend to provide public information and links on every one of them to remedies and other materials that folks could take. We are not trying to avoid the issues because of lack of importance. We're avoiding, we really can't get our arms around replicable testing in a manner that could be duplicated over 14,000 units. That being said, all of our inspectors, as well as our website, as well as our registration material, will have information on where one can go if they have concerns and actions to pursue.
Michael?
That's exactly what I was going to ask about, that we're going to having, we will be having an educational component to this, both our website as well as printed materials available, and you gave some very succinct and useful information. Worried about meth? County Health Department. Worried about asbestos? Leave it alone, that kind of thing.
Jack?
Is it possible to, I mean, looking at some of these kits, these testing kits, is it possible that we could purchase some of them in bulk and then offer them at cost to people that are interested in, you know, buying these kits? That would, it would be a cheaper approach for a property owner or a tenant to be able to go and test. You know, I don't know if we can get into that type of business, but...
Right. Well, the first would be, let me find out about the applicability of what you need to know to administer the test. If it's something that's, you can do it yourself.
Yeah.
You know, follow the instructions. That's one thing. If it's something that requires training or...
Yeah, not on asbestos, but maybe more on the meth side.
Right, and that's what I was thinking. So we can get back to more specifically on that, and certainly that's something that could be a resource if it could be made available.
Thank you.
Just a comment. I think meth, lead and asbestos are probably maybe a little bit out of our realm, and I feel like we're just trying to get this program off the ground. So I'd like to start simpler, but education, I think, is important, but that's just my, let's start, get it going first.
Okay, any other comments for, is that it, Rick?
No, we have more.
Okay, go ahead. Just try it. Just try it. Not bad.
What I can suggest is, is you're seeing the breadth of the city departments that are being brought to bear. What you haven't seen today is both IT and finance who've been heavily involved in trying to make this a workable program within the timelines we have, and I'm going to turn it over to a city attorney who will talk about the forthcoming ordinance. Thank you.
Peter Raffato, along those lines, when finance, IT, planning staff really start digging into the implementation, it appears there are a few areas we'll want to tweak the ordinance. We won't see any substantive changes, in my opinion, but just to kind of give you some items, some concepts that you may be seeing in the third and final. One obvious one is the effective date of the ordinance. I think we had that as January 1 of this year. That'll have to be changed. Another one is the deadline, I think, for registration. I think we had July. That's going to be changed to August. Another example is the definition of rental property. Right now, it's defined as any complex of structures being managed as a single rental unit, even if it crosses parcel lines. When they look at the automation that they're trying to do with registration, turns out there are very few complexes, maybe five in the entire city that fall into that. So in order to make the automation more simple, we're looking at just defining it as one, as a parcel, as long as it's on one parcel. So that's just to give you an idea. A lot of the things are, when you look at how to automate it, how does the ordinance line up with that? Another example is what exactly will be submitted at the time of registration? It has to line up with the software and online capabilities. Will there be a declaration of compliance, and what would that look like? And also, the timing of renewals. I think right now we just say, you know, as long as you renew by the, obviously, the deadline, and then we say that the registration is operational for a year. We may actually have a date certain when all renewals will have to take place. Another small example is the lamination of the registration. We might be taking that up because we just don't see that as, that's a whole new cost. There was going to be a laminated registration. I think we'll have something that will be posted, but it may not be laminated. And finally, there was a noted clarification that we'll make certain it's clear that the penalties would apply to landlords and/or owners in making sure that they're both responsible for complying with the code. So that's what we're looking at, and we still have to refine those, but you'll be seeing those at third and final.
Jack?
Is there a question of whether or not there would be a declaration of compliance? You know, that would, because to me, it seems like everybody would have to do a declaration of compliance on the first round by August, and then as people get inspected in one-third increments throughout the next three years, that that part of it would change for those particular years, for those particular units?
Well, the real specific thing that we're looking at is, you know, for example, the code was written as if some of this would be done on paper, signed, so I think it's more along the lines of, will it be a checkbox, and how will that be, how will that declaration of compliance really manifest itself?
It might very well be by checking submit, you agree and certify, rather than having an electronic signature. Saves us cost and still is legally...
Okay, I understand.
So that's the detail we're into, trying to make the system line up.
Okay, but the general...
Yes.
The general direction of a declaration of compliance is still solid?
When you register, you assert you're in compliance.
Got it.
Pinky?
Rick, quick question about the registration process. I was sort of thinking about the time and labor costs for property managers. If they've got 20 or plus units, do they, can they enter, is it one registration with all the units, or do they actually have to go in 20 times and enter it?
We, you heard our discussion last week, and one of the things are, that's what we're working out right now, whether we could do a parcel-based system, property-based system that include all the units on that property. There's some indication on that might be favorable. We're sweating the details now to minimize the need to do replicable actions. Again, this is not an off-the-shelf solution, so every time we make it more complex, it adds costs, so we're trying to find that balance in doing so.
Okay, thank you.
Rick, anything else?
Yes. Last is on the inspection program status. What I can say is that the key issue is to be mindful that whatever system we implement can nest fully with our forthcoming permitting system. There's a significant advantage to having a system that would be integrated and not an outlier system afterward. Whether we continue with registration or we merge it into, that's to come, but certainly for inspection, which is much more property-specific, needs to have an ongoing institutional memory, if you will, record conditions. You want to have that happen. In doing so, we are, as I understand it, and I know Marty is here, I believe, behind me, we're in discussions with the provider for our permitting system. Actually, I think we're sending out an agreement to prepare the specifics for inspection and incorporate it in. However, it's premature to wrap that up, although we have a fairly good number, and I provided you a spreadsheet that shows where we're at roughly in terms of the inspection, less than $33 per year, if you average it over three years. That number only becomes final when we find out exactly what we can do online and exactly what we can do for inspection, because we're counting on those economies. As you'll note from that, we have a half FTE because of automation saving us the need to deal with the phones. If that can't be perfected, boy, we're going to have to up the FTEs, and that's an ongoing cost. So we're, within a period of time, certainly within the next 90 days, perhaps sooner, we'll be able to come back to you with a very good answer on what those costs and how it would be implemented and move forward. As council will recall, we did phase one funding, and that gets us up and running for registration and for the deadlines you assigned. The implementation of the inspection would be after January, and we have time to come back to you for the funding of that phase when our costs are more perfected. That being said, it's important to note that, again, the registration fee will be the only fee you'll see on the fee schedule, that and a late fee. The inspection fee will be determined as we perfect the work and come back, and we anticipate within 90 days coming back to you with that sort of solved, we hope, at that point. We are still on track for public information launch in March and initial mailing in May, and we'll keep you posted on that as we progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any further questions for Rick? I'll announce the direction we gave tonight. Thank you very much. The next item is approval of committee minutes dated January 26.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any discussion? All who favor will say aye.
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 All who oppose, motion carries seven zero. Old or new business? Michael, then Dan?
I have two items of new business. The first one, the administration, both the city attorney and the communications director are looking to set up a work group on social media and communications in general as part of the city's communication strategy. They've made a request for a couple council members to sit on that work group. They would meet only as needed, not on a regular basis. They'd like to make that request, and they're asking for volunteers.
But we have one of them, not you.
I would like to volunteer. I don't know if there's anybody else as well.
Pinky?
Okay. Peter or Kelly, could you...
Go ahead, Kelly.
Well, the point is, hopefully it'll go faster, but it was more like the peg work group that you and Jean sat on, so that we have two council members involved as we're talking about the strategy. We're making sure that we have some consistency throughout the city and how we use social media appropriately. The council is a different bird than some of the employees.
Thank you for not saying animal. That was really nice.
Okay, well, the council, it operates under different rules, and so we just want to make sure the council's involved when we come up with a policy that we think will protect us in the future. So thank you for volunteering.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. The second one has to do with a follow-up on the issue that came up the last meeting or meeting before that. This has to do with state actions at the state level, Department of Ecology, on fish consumption standards and cancer risk rates. Apparently, a lot of it's going to be going on in the next phase is an administrative review process in State Department of Ecology, and there's opportunities for the public, for itself, anyone to weigh in on that. We've talked about this, I know there's some other council members who are interested, that the city council or the city might want to weigh in on those standards. They will affect city operations and stormwater. So my request would be, and I've talked with my attorney in the mayor's office, that maybe we should have a work session on this, see what there is there, learn more about it, and only at that point decide if we want to say anything or be involved in the process. So my request is that we refer this item to a committee for some discussion and education.
And I would, I would second Michael's request, because as you all know, I sat on that committee at the state level, and there was, I mean, there was obviously very robust discussion for about six months, and I think it would be an excellent thing for the council to understand where the committee and members of the committee were coming from in, in order to make that decision, so...
Which, which committee would that fall under? There you go. Fish Consumption Committee.
I'm not sure.
No, we...
Natural Resources.
Natural Resources, so...
Well, it could be National Resources, or it could be the Public Works Committee, because...
Yeah, that's true.
I think actually, because that's our water delivery system and our discharge, so it probably would be most appropriate there.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Is that okay, Terry?
Yeah, is that okay? Anybody have a problem with that other than Terry?
I tried to go the other way.
Okay?
That's fine.
Dan?
Sure.
Are you done, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
So as the new council member, I've spent the last month plus meeting with department heads and staff members, and I wanted to take a moment just to acknowledge the time that was spent in meetings and facility tours and so forth. So I'd like to thank city staff members for meeting with me and providing tours. These meetings, tours and time with staff have been highly informative, and I appreciate the time that has been taken to provide them. Specifically, I'd like to thank the following individuals: Mayor Linville, Ted Carlson, Public Works Director, John Hutchings, Assistant Director, Natural Resources Division, Eric Johnston, Assistant Director of Operations for Public Works, Bill Riley, Surface and Stormwater Manager, Renee La Croix, Ecology and Restoration Manager, Claire Fogelson, Fogelson Natural Resources Policy Manager, Police Chief Cliff Cook, Deputy Chiefs Flo Simon and Dave Dahl, Lieutenant Slodisco, Lieutenant Mike Johnston, Fire Chief Bill Newbold, EMS Captain Sean Farnand, Museum Director Patricia Leach, Parks Director James King, IT Director Marty Maholland, Library Director Pam Keisner, Janice Keller, the Library Communications Manager, City Attorney Peter Raffato, City Attorneys Amy Cram, James Urb and Alan Mariner, Planning Director Rick Sepler, Finance Director Brian Henshaw, and Municipal Court Administrator Darlene Peterson. I've met with all these individuals over the past 30, 40 days, and I'm just impressed with the amount of passion, talent, and just great work that they do. So just want to acknowledge them this time. Thank you.
That's very impressive. When I first got elected, Mayor Douglas looked at me, and I was the only person I met with back then. He said, "What did you do this for?" So I mean, that's, that's really impressive, Dan, so glad to hear that. Roxanne?
I really commend you, because it's such an uphill battle to learn everything that we need to know about the governance of this organization, so great work. That's awesome.
Pinky?
Oh, wait, I have more.
You're not done. Okay, go ahead.
First of all, the Marine Resources Committee that I meet with requested that the city ask a member of the Marine Resources Committee to be a key stakeholder regarding the critical areas ordinance. So is there a way we could send outreach to the MRC to ask them to send a person?
And it hasn't just been that group, so we'll, as Rick has said, we're stepping back on that in order to come up with the goals and whatever, and yes, I think early public involvement is important. So I would just say yes, except I think that...
Or...
I think that we need to look at how that process will work, so it isn't just keep adding people, but we make sure that we're getting the right kind of input. So is that, I acknowledge that they have good information that they could share with us, and we will come back hopefully with a, with a plan if we're going to do more than the normal notification that we do, which I think we are.
Okay, great. I still have more.
Okay, go ahead.
So one thing that I'm asking the council to consider is a future work session, we don't have to be immediate on this, because I know it's a big topic, but to consider paid and protected sick leave in our city. I've seen that Seattle, Sea-Tac, Tacoma, they've all implemented this at varying different degrees, and I also have heard that Spokane is looking at this this year. And so people throughout Washington State has said, "What's up with liberal Bellingham, and why aren't you guys moving on this?" So I just hope we could have a work session to really take a look at this. I've been working with a lot of our union leaders to get their input on this, but I know there are many voices we would need to hear before we would implement this, and I hope if council agrees on it, it could lead to a potential policy document, and then possibly a public hearing, maybe even a vote. So I make that request for a future work session.
Okay.
And just a couple more things. I really want to thank the mayor, because Michael and I attended the BIA, the Building Industry Association, meeting, and she got some pretty heavy-hitting questions about what the future of the city is going to be, so I appreciated her work with that community. I also had a chance to go visit with all of the Western Washington University journalism students that are here, and to help prove that journalism is still a valued resource within our society. Also, I got to speak at Elect Her, which was also at Western Washington University on Saturday, to try to encourage younger women to run for office, and I want to encourage anybody, if you have the time, to view She's Beautiful When She's Angry. There was a sold-out showing of this movie at the Pickford Cinema, and it really goes through the interesting aspects of the feminist movement, and I appreciated the panel discussion from female Western professors that happened after that. And lastly, I just really want to thank the Lummy Indian Business Council, because they had us, many of us, in their home of the administration building for a meet and greet with their elected officials and several electeds from here and from throughout the county. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Pinky?
I wanted to thank Marie Machon, our legislative assistant who keeps us together. She created a really great brochure called A Citizen's Guide to the Bellingham City Council. It's a little trifold, explains what we do, just in case you guys don't know, and has all our information on the back. But thank you, Marie, and I think this is a great thing out there for people. If you have any interest in city council, what we do, what our roles are, or how to contact us, this is a great new tool. Thank you, Marie.
Jack?
I was on the airport advisory committee with the port and a bunch of citizen volunteers over the last few years. I did not sign up for it this year, but they continue to send me information. Recently, they did send the entire council an email... Recently, they did send the entire council an email concerning some communication they had with the port commissioners concerning trails, the trail system, or proposed trail system around the airport. It's something that we, in the Greenways Committee in the city, had been looking at probably 10 to 15 years ago in a very serious way. And one of the things that happened out of 9/11 was that, you know, the FAA just kind of shut everything down, but it wasn't shut down in a way that prohibited a trail system around the airport property. And what I would like to ask the mayor, if you would be willing, is to have our Parks Department come, and maybe with the Parks Committee, to do a small work session to find out what the possible options are of us being able to get some sort of trail system around the airport, to link into our existing Greenway system, just to kind of complete that.
Well, and I'm happy to do...have Director King come and talk about that. I've already directed him to work with Sylvia at the port, so that there's a good communication link there. I misunderstood with the issue, because I had asked Rob Fix about it after it came up, that there was a plan for trails, and the port doesn't have any plan, and I understand now it's because they don't want...they were reluctant to have something around the airport. But there is a direction to the director to talk to the port and make sure that we're working together, so that if the city comes up with some requests, it's not a shock to anybody. But I think he'd be happy to...he'd be happy to come and talk about trails, any kind of trail, anytime. So we'll make sure that happens.
Okay. Well, if that's something that we could do...
At the pleasure of the policy group, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one item, is the retreat. We've talked about this before. We still don't really have a date, you know. I think everybody could be there on the 21st, except for Dan. I think it's important if we try to rework that because of what we've come up with. In talking with Terry last Saturday, rather than have a facilitator and do all that kind of stuff, I want to ask the mayor that she bring her department heads with her and come to the retreat. Marty's frowning at me now. What do I have to come to the retreat for? No, she's smiling, and...
She's not really frowning.
No, I know. I'm just kidding. But I think it's a good idea. That have been some of the best retreats we've had in the past. Rather than have facilitator and play some games and stuff like that, I'm not really interested in that, and I know a lot of those aren't either. So we'll see if we can work out a date, and you talk to your department heads, and we will be more than happy to have...because I think those have been some of our more productive retreats.
Would you consider, and we're going to talk further about it, would you consider the department heads rotating through?
Sure.
So not necessarily all 13 at one time.
They don't have to suffer all day if they don't want to. No, 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 that's fine.
Okay, well, let's discuss it when we have our meeting.
Okay. Anything else under old or new business? That was probably one of the lengthy old or new businesses we've had in a long time. Okay, we now go to executive session. There are six executive session items, two of which were scheduled after the packet was printed. Number one, labor negotiations, 15 minutes. Number two, litigation, Fred Meyer Stores, appeal of MDNS and consolidated permit issued for the Costco project, 15 minutes. Potential property acquisition, five minutes. Potential property acquisition, five minutes. Potential property sale, five minutes.